It is six o'clock. We would like to call a meeting to order. If you would, please stand. At this time Pastor Terry Pierce will come forward and give us our invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we honor you as the everlasting God, the Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the end. As Creator, you spoke all things into existence and even the profound mysteries and intricate details of all nature and science were established by the word of your mouth. The greatness and power is yours. Glory and majesty and splendor belong to you. You sent Christ Jesus to die for our sins and you raised him from the dead and seated him in the heavenly realms, far above all rule and authority, power and dominion and every title that can be given, not only in this age but also in the one to come. You are the ultimate authority. We acknowledge that wealth and honor come from you. Strength and power are in your hands. The clouds that hold the rain. And we bow before you to worship and to give you thanks. You alone are our God. And so, Lord, as a single voice identifying with and representing people of Odessa from the past and the present, I humbly confess the sins of our city, its citizens and its councils. I confess that we've been blinded by the false gods of this age. We've exchanged the truth of God for Satan's lie. We've entertained carnal attractions in worldly ways. Only a trifling percentage of our population acknowledges God or observes a day of worship. And as a result, crime increases at a frightening pace. Sexual immorality runs rampant everywhere, especially among teenagers. And rating our city is one of the highest in Texas for unwed teen pregnancies. We've been seduced by liberal politicians to make prayer and patriotism of crime. We've shut our ears and closed our eyes while the continuous appeals of a godless minority have chipped away at the very foundation of marriage and family. Give ear, oh God, and hear. Open your eyes, oh Lord, and see the desolation that threatens us. Oh Lord, forgive. Oh Lord, hear and act. I did not make this request of you because we are righteous, but because you are the God of great mercy. So for your sake, oh Lord, hear our prayer. You promised if your people are called by your name, will humble themselves and pray and seek your faith and turn from their wicked ways. Then you will hear from heaven and forgive their sin and heal their land. Oh God, I claim that promise. Please, Lord, heal our city. Saturate the atmosphere over the Permian Basin with your holiness. Settle upon us with a heavy awareness of the fear of God. Revive us, oh God. Bring spiritual transformation to every council, to every church, to every home. Make our schools and colleges to become institutions of righteous learning inspired from the principles of holy scripture. Convict sinners of their sin and convince all mankind of soon coming judgment day. Send your Holy Spirit, Lord, to rule and reign in our hearts until it becomes known over all the world that Odessa is the city where God is. And now, Lord, bless this city council, these servants whom you've chosen to sit in these seats of responsibility. Give them wisdom. Give them compassion. Give them conscience and character. Guide them with your word and with your presence. These things I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, at this time, Councilmember Gonzalez will lead us in the pledges.
Pledge of pledges. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the banner of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Okay, we do not have any proclamations, awards, or presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of item E.
Okay, we have our motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of E. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now we will consider the resolution authorizing the contract between Midland County Elections Administrators and the City of Odessa. Ms. Crumlin.
Thank you, Council. This item is to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Midlands Elections Administrator to furnish election service and equipment for holding the November 8th election for registered voters that reside inside the city limits but live within Midland County. In previous elections, the Midlands Elections Office would send a list to the registered voters that live in Midland County. The Secretary of State has authorized that the city's go into an interlocal agreement for all the counties that we have an election for where the city resides in. And the cost would be a proportional cost of the precinct that would be in Midland County. So we're going to be paying a proportional cost. It's not going to be an entire equal share cost for the Midland County's Elections Office and elections to be held. This is the first year to go into an agreement with this, and this agreement is for the November 8th election.
Okay. Question?
Yeah, where will the people vote?
The people will, the people, the city registered voters that are in precinct 201, which is District 2, that live in Midland County, they have the option to vote here in Ector County at the polling places, or those people only can vote at the designated voting locations in Midland County. And that's going to be listed in the ordinance and that will be published and people will be aware of that. But only the voters that live in Midland County, City of Odessa, can vote in Midland County.
So they can, what you're saying is they can actually vote in either county?
Either or, yes.
Okay.
Any more questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Still move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Crumlin. Under other council action, consider purchase of container transport trucks. Mr. Phillips.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Before you, this evening, you have the consideration of a purchase of two container transport trucks for our solid waste department. The approval of this would be two trucks that are scheduled replacements for the solid waste department utilizing the HJC contract from our Russian Truck Center, the local deal. The replacement vehicles are 2003 and 2010 year model with over 100,000 miles on them each. The vehicles are Peterville 337 models. The total purchase price for the two vehicles is $215,896. Are there any questions I may answer?
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still move.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Phil. Next, consider awards and bid for proposed park improvements to Slater Park. Mr. Patton.
Good evening.
Evening.
I know my sign here is exciting as well, the trash trucks are, but this is exciting. And I'm glad to be here for the bid award for Slater Park. This is in Barbara's District on Slater Park. Slater Park is on 38th and Pleasant, and this is a major renovation to that particular park site. Much needed, highly used park, has a community building, two baseball fields that are there now, one little crawling piece of equipment, and that's all we have at that park site. The renovations planned for the park would be a new dog park, would be Odessa's first dog park. It'd be split into small dogs on one side, large dogs on the other side. This does include a 20-foot by 20-foot pavilion in both areas, also a drinking fountain that accommodates dogs as well as people, not from the same boat, but when Laura went up. Just wanted to make sure that we clarified it. Also, a double gate entry for the dog park. I worked with the design committee, development committee, citizens from the Odessa Dog Park Development Committee, and now they are friends of the dog park, and Odessa government is head of that committee. Also, a parking lot to accommodate the needs for the park as well as the dog park, lighting for the parking lot. Just a little further to the north of the dog park, we're going to have a picnic pavilion. It'll be a 20-foot by 40-foot large picnic pavilion. In between the picnic pavilion and the dog park, there'll be a live-in basketball court with surfacing and backstops, just like what we have at UTPV Park and other parks that we've built recently with these new basketball courts, and also a very nice playground that'll be just out of the front door of the south entrance, no, the east entrance into the community building. Also, lighting will be added to the existing parking lot. So a major renovation, $1,379,000, I believe, and our bid is from Onyx Construction from Midland, Texas. The bid is within the estimate as proposed by Kenley Horn, our consulting landscape architecture group, and we looked it over, talked to Onyx about not only doing this but three other projects for us, doing a good job so far, and we recommend that we go ahead and award this bid.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a statement, and I just want to reiterate that, I mean, you just stated the amount of money that we're going to spend there, and I'd really like to make sure that we get something done with that well site that's there.
On the west side.
On the west, well, northwest side, right behind the, that, I guess it's a little --
Oh, the community building, yes.
Oh, community building. And because, you know, when you spend this kind of money for the community, I really want to make sure that we get that taken care of. This, I mean, that could be a nice award for a lot of people, so please do me that favor, please.
What is going to be done to the community building? Fresh color paint, that's about all we've got money for at this point. It's in pretty good shape.
Yeah. It's very, it's very good.
It's heavily used.
It is used a lot, and it'll even be used more so. With dismant amenities, it'll be even more.
Any more questions?
Just one thing I'd like for you guys to look at whenever you're doing those, like, I've really looked real hard at those buildings, and I'm sure you probably did, but that thing's been there a long time, and we need to make sure that those are, you know, we put, put what money, although we don't need to spend on them, but put the money in them that needs to be put in them and fix them up where people can use them and, you know, they look good when you go in.
We're going to need a second phase to address this, and there's, the master plan itself would be to expand the park site to the east and eventually taking a property that's a drill site to the east, and we'd expand the park across the street, and that would be practice fields and all, so there would be another phase of development.
Are you going to close that road, that part of the street, or what? No.
That's a, that's a pretty much major.
One other question I had, with the playground, is it going to be an area where there will be shade?
The, they think the pavilion is just on the south side of the playground.
Because if not, I would love to see us begin putting some type of cloth shade or something over our playgrounds. It gets so hot here in the summer.
Those are great trampolines in other cities. That's what I'm finding out. There's, we do have, yeah, people sleep on them and crawl on them with the shade factor. There's, but there are other pavilion, smaller pavilions that we can do to look at shades. This one is really close, real close to that particular area.
Okay.
And it's, I've seen exactly what you're talking about in several other communities, and it's almost inviting for children to crawl on it and cut it, burn it. I'm not a big favorite of the cloth awnings anymore because they're temporary fix, they do a great job for a year or two, then you're looking at replacement, and the price just keeps getting higher and higher, and those materials are constant maintenance. Unlike the metal structures like we did, it was a great, great area for shade, right there next to the shade structure on the playground itself. Also, the playground has got some metal structures that provide shade, so it's just part of the design.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Still move.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you.
Next, under bid awards, we'll consider award of a contract for construction of a police parking structure. Chief, oh, you're back, Philip.
I see me twice today. Council, this is to consider the award contract for the construction of a police parking structure. Proposals for this project were publicly open on May 10th, 2016. We received five proposals from local contractors, Campbell Construction, Fairs Metal Building, J.C. Roberts Construction, M.W. Builders, and Onyx Construction. A war proposal would authorize the construction of a metal building with improved exterior design for garage-based storage. This structure would house vehicles that are very expensive vehicles that are used by the police department, such as the armored vehicle, the communications trailer that houses multiple items of communication from computers to radios that currently just sit out in the weather elements now. This would also establish a forensic processing unit that we currently do not possess for the police department. They have to process any vehicles or other evidence in an area that's not climate controlled. Staff has reviewed the proposals along with the designing architecture firm, JSA Architects, and Cruz, who was the designing architect, is here. And along with staff and Cruz and JSA, we'd like to recommend contract award to Fairs Metal Buildings for a price of $1,55,000. They've offered to complete the building in 210 construction days. This was a supplemental account that was offered to the police department two years ago, I'm sorry, four years ago, and it has a balance of $2 million in it, so we would look at some future development in that area. And I've got some pictures of the area there. We discussed this in finance committee here, but this is the new structure that would be built, the new parking structure. This is the central fire station. This is what it would look like after it has been skinned, reskinned.
But the old central fire station?
Old central fire station, yes, sir. This is right behind the existing police station. This is the, the current central fire station that probably looks a little more familiar. It's, it's an older structure there. This would be the first phase that we're looking at with the parking structure. It would add the forensic bays and also the ability to park the vehicles in, as we discussed. And with the funds that we have, we would be able to do this first phase here of being able to reskin the existing structure. Eventually, down the road, there's an envision, envisionment of being able to have a unified building structure there. This is being the old central fire station and the new structure here, and this was a design that Cruz and JSA came up with. Are there any questions I may address?
Any questions? Will you turn that voice to the audience, too?
I just wanted to hear from the chief as far as if he's happy with the results and the --
Yes, Counselor. Actually, we're very pleased because we were fortunate in the sense that the timing has worked out well for us in terms of the cost per square foot for this kind of project. What this does for us is several things. It provides us not only the things that Philip just described to you in the short term, which is the protection of some very expensive pieces of equipment, as well as some forensic capabilities that we don't currently possess, but it also provides us for future development of the existing structure, which will enable us to place things into that structure, like the police academy, like our ongoing training and education facility, and like special purpose units that currently enjoy no space within headquarters building. So this is amazingly functional for us at what I think is a very cost-effective expenditure for the city, as well as improving the entire block and turning that block into essentially a unified public safety municipal court set of facilities that will benefit the citizens.
So we're going to proceed with what would be called Phase Two or Three as far as attending bids considered, or we don't lose this whole concept?
Do you want me to --
Who met?
Yes, Counselor. The, the $1,55,000 that you're under consideration for this evening is the money that will pay for the new structure, for this, this structure here that will be attached to the existing facility. However, we were fortunate in terms of timing and the price per square foot, that that will leave us sufficient funds to negotiate additional construction, which will allow for the expansion of the renovation of the old structure. Essentially, that will leave us only with interior renovation of the old structure to fully complete the project.
And Chief, that has to happen in two phases. Phase one has to happen in basically two phases. They're going to award a base bid today, $1,55,000, and then immediately seek a change order to skin the whole thing.
Yes.
Okay. Then with the leftover dollars, we'll put another bid out while they're working on site to complete the third picture.
Okay. That's what I was referring to.
That would be, good evening, everyone. That would be the stair and elevator tower.
Right.
That looks great.
That allows for the handicap accessibility code component to work for us that way, like the chief said, further interior renovations could then happen at the right moment.
I'm excited.
So right now, you've got enough cash to get it to work?
Yes, sir.
To that last picture?
To the last picture.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions?
And the thing I like about it is it's going to look downtown. It's not just going to be just a metal building. We are going to improve it and make our downtown look better.
Yes, Counselor. Well, the theme you see at the front of the police department with the lamppost lighting and the signage and stuff will be continued throughout the entire block.
Good. Fantastic. Great job, guys. Thank you.
I'm ready for approval.
Thank you, Cruz.
Second. Any more discussion? Are any none? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to public hearings. At this time, we'll open the floor carrying to consider the approval of the request of Billy Jack Glover. Mr. Brenly.
Have you been holding back on us? We haven't had any people on.
We've had two huge two in the entire decision. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city mailed out 11 notices related to this case. We had one notice returned. We did not receive any written protest or any written approvals related to this request. The property involved in the request is approximately a 12.4 acre tract. It's located southwest of the intersection of West Murphy Street and Williams Avenue. The land use on the property is currently one residential structure, and there's a producing oil well and tank battery located on this site. Land use in the area does consist of industrial development. The applicant and the property owner in this case is Billy Jack Glover, and the purpose of the request of the original zonings would further industrial development on this site and also the designation of the existing drill site material that's located there. This area is located in an industrial development area as indicated in the city's comprehensive plan, and oil well and gas well development and additional industrial development is reasonable uses for this property. The zonings of light industrial and light industrial drill reservation that is requested for the site is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood and the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to these requests, and the staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I had a, I was kind of hoping that it was going to be turned into a nice little park or something, because it's got a nice little pond there, because that's on the Monahans draw, right?
It's very close to it, yes, sir.
Just, we're just changing the zoning on it?
No, sir. It's never been zoned, and this is the original zoning. Mr. Glover's owned it for years and years, and there's that one residential on the back, and he's ready to develop it now, and that's why he's requesting the zoning. It's the last track down there that hadn't been zoned. You can see the proximity to the city limits there and everything around it except this one track that's been zoned.
Why is he planning to put there?
I don't think he's, really has a solid plan on it yet, Ms. Graff. It's just he needs to have his own for what he might be able to do down there.
Maybe we don't want to zone it for that. Maybe we want to make it part. This is where the decision comes in. Do we want to go that way, or do we want to go from a park?
We're going to have to approve this property. But this is property.
There'd be problems with zoning it for a park in that we would be viewed as having placed our governmental authority over it and refusing him to develop it for what other needs he wishes to have. If, if you're viewing it as inconsistent with the zoning that he is proposing, then you're certainly free to turn down this zoning and apply any other zoning, but we're not free to look at somebody's property and just zone it for what needs we wish it to have.
And that's not what I was suggesting. I was just saying it would have been nice, you know, at the end of the day. I mean, because we don't have a lot of --
Yeah, I think at one time, where you see the rounded out, on the aerial, the rounded out part, there was a fishing dock there, and he did have private parties and stuff out there. I believe at one time, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Second.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on agenda item number four. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we'll open up a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Benjamin Cesar Oner.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city sent out 13 notices. We had one notice returned. We did receive one written protest and four written approvals. The property involved in the request is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Richwood Road and Bop White Drive. Site is currently is owned single-family too, and there is a single-family residence located on this property. Land use in the area does consist of single-family residential development, and Loop 338 is located east of this site. The applicant in the case is Benjamin Casares. He is the owner of the property. Purpose of this specific use permit request would allow a one-chair beauty shop to be established and operated on the property that is located in this residential district. We have had a site plan submitted. This site plan does indicate the location of the existing single-family residence. There's an existing hobby shop that's located on the property, and also the proposed salon is shown on this site plan. Parking for the residents in the proposed salon is also showed, and access to the salon would be through the gate that's existing in the back part of the property. Building setbacks, lot coverage, and parking all meet ordinance requirements. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request with the following conditions, that there will be no business signs allowed on the property. Access to the salon will be limited to the walkway that's shown on the site plan at the rear of the property. There will be one operator that is a immediate family member who'd be allowed to work in the shop. Also, hours of operation would be from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Would be adoption of this site plan. All applicable building codes would be met with the construction of the proposed salon. And also, the council would have the authority to review the permit upon receipt of any neighborhood complaint. This is considered a temporary permit, and the council does have the right of termination for any violation of the terms or conditions of this permit or because of a negative effect on the neighborhood, and this would occur after a public hearing to determine these facts. And would we have, answer any questions?
Questions?
Well, a question I had, one of the complaints was that the owner parks a rather large truck on the side, and it does block people's view as they're driving. With this, is there going to be room for that large truck to be inside the property and not out on the street? and not out on the street?
Now, that, Ms. Graff, I cannot answer. I know that the four parking spaces that are needed for the residence and the shop are provided on-site. I wasn't aware of a truck being parked on the street.
That's just what the card said.
Yeah.
So...
And I don't know if it's the applicant's truck or maybe just one in the neighborhood. We did, at the PNC meeting, we did hear some complaints about trucks parking on the pipeline that's behind this property, and that was forwarded to code enforcement for investigation to look into that.
I have a question to ask you first, sir. The owner of the property, or they planning to homestead a house?
I do believe the house has already been homesteaded, Ms. Mil...
Not yet.
It hadn't been?
No.
The owner is here. You can ask him that. He hadn't indicated to us that they were going to homestead it or not.
Because I don't think the... They will be allowed to have the business a part of the homestead.
Okay.
Now, the legal aspect of that, that's a little bit of a lottery.
Okay, are there any more questions?
The parking has been taken care of?
Yes, sir.
There's not one?
No, sir. There won't be an issue with that. Each use is required to have two spaces, and they are there.
It's paid?
Yes, it is paid.
So you say the owner is here?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we address the owner about that?
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing now. Come on up and you talk.
Is it your truck that tends to park outside there by the curb?
My truck never parks outside the curb. I also have a circle drive up in that corner, and it parks in the corner in my circle drive. It doesn't exceed into the sidewalk or anything. It's actually a plus that it parks there because a lot of people like to just blaze through that stop sign. It actually makes them stop. So there... And I have plenty of parking on the side, so there's never a vehicle outside of it.
Okay, other questions?
What are going to be your hours of operation?
They're limited from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Usually it's done by four or five.
Other questions?
Have you applied for the homestead?
I had a homestead. I'm going to apply for it again. I just re-finance the house.
At that location?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this Agenda Item Number Five? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the information. Next, Item Six, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of DJK Inc. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The property involved in this request is located north of the intersection of Rado Drive and Mission Boulevard. The site is designated for future development. It is currently vacant. Land use in this area is vacant. The applicant in this case is DJK. They are the owners, and RSP Permian is the leasie of this site, and the purpose of this original zoning request, FDVR, would establish a drill site on the property. The request for original zoning and future development is not contrary to the land use plan that's indicated in the city's master plan and/or the proposed land uses in this area, and this use is not out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood and the city. Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request to future development drill reservation back in June of 2014, and the applicant did request that the site be placed on hold before submitting this request for final approval by the council. And the applicant is ready to proceed with development of the site as a drill site and request that it be submitted to the council. And the staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who'd like to speak on this Item Number Six. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Motion, wait a second. Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the annexation of the city of Odessa approximately 25.47 acres. Mr. Long, Mr. Brenly.
You want to take one? Go ahead. Tonight, I bring before you a much reduced annexation request. We actually, with recent additions, have 31 acres that are being requested. Three of them will be to establish a CVS Pharmacy along the intersection of 42nd and West Loop. There will be two that are going to be for the development of FMC, who is currently a company that has an industrial district agreement with us, but they are anxious to get into the city limits. And then one will be a strip along East Murphy that is immediately east of South Meadow. And all of them are seeking the annexation, and we have gone through all the necessary steps. This is a public hearing, so...
Okay, are there any questions from council? Okay, at this time, we'll open up the floor to discuss this Agenda Item on annexation. Is there anyone who would like to come forward? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the resolution approving the issuance by New Hope Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corps. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Convis Academy Charter Schools has requested the issuance of education revenue bonds or duxative notes for acquisition, construction, improving the equipment of their facilities located at both 1111 Page Wood and 56th and Billy Hex Road. It would just be the city's function to authorize these bonds. We are not responsible on anybody for their payment or their issuance. I would say that this is also a public hearing.
Are there any questions from council?
Would you all like the opportunity to say anything? I mean, you know, beat your drums and recumbent or whatever.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open a floor for any public discussion. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to ordinances. Consider calling the 2016 General City Election. Ms. Romano.
Thank you, Mayor. This item would call the General City Election to be held November 8, 2016. It calls a regular election for the seats mayor, council members District One and District Two for a four-year term, and the election will be held jointly with Ector County.
Okay, are there any questions?
Now, this is going to be different this year, right?
Correct.
With the election. You're going to be able to go to any place on Election Day, right?
On Election Day, you can go at any voting center and voting place to vote.
How is that going to affect how much we pay for the elections? To me, my mind says we're going to be paying more than we have in the past because in the past, we only paid for the sites that we used, right?
Correct.
On Election Day.
Correct.
Now, we pay for all of them.
We're going to pay for half the cost of each one of them. Remember, in the past, we've had joint elections with the other entities, which include the hospital and ISD. In this case, it's only going to be the city and the county. So our cost is going to increase because we're going to be paying more of the cost for the election because we're not doing a portion for the other entities.
So we'll pay half?
Half.
Wow.
So it will increase.
Okay.
Are there any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Romano. Next, to the resolution, consider approval of professional service agreement for surveying. Ms. Phil, Ms. Kerr.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have for your consideration this evening a professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates for right-of-way surveying and right-of-way acquisition services for the University Boulevard project. They will be partnering with a local firm, Land Grant Furniture and Associates, and other professionals in performing these services. This will include surveying of the properties that are needed for the improvements, including the winding of the roadway and areas, as well as the preparation of documents and negotiation of contracts with the landowners. In this project, we will be needing to purchase properties outright of about eight parcels, approximately eight pieces of property that we would purchase in full, and then purchase roadway easements for an estimated 56 parcels. So we're looking at about 64 properties altogether that will involve. The total price for this is $322,460.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider professional services agreement and resolution for performing water and wastewater master plans. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you again. This is for your consideration, another professional services agreement. This is with another part of the Kimley Horn Associates team. Back in April, we brought forward, from an RFQ that was issued for consulting firms, we had four responding firms, and Kimley Horn was the selection of the committee. We brought it to council, and the Ector County Utility District Board and the council approved the selection of Kimley Horn. Following up with that, we have negotiated a fee and scope of services for the project, and that is what we're coming to you today with, is a professional services agreement to implement those projects. This will include a water master plan for the Ector County Utility District and wastewater master plans for the city of Odessa. These are following also with the comprehensive master plans with the city, so this is a movement forward with those issues, but will help us reprioritize our capital needs in the water and water systems, help us do some financial forecasting so that we can make a good use of the funds that we may need. The total cost, the total amount of the project is $850,200. $241,950 of that project is the Ector County Utility District portion, and so the city's portion is $608,250. This is within the budgeted amount that we have established back in the 2015 fiscal year. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is ECA? Is this okay with ECA?
Yes, ma'am. Our boards approve the $241,000.
Okay. Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Don't go anywhere, Tom.
Left it.
Consider memorandum of understanding and resolution with ECA.
Thank you again. This is a memorandum of understanding associated with, for your consideration, which is associated with the project that we just talked about. This memorandum of understanding is with the Ector County Utility District, and basically establishes that the city will be the administrator of the project. We will help manage the consultants such that they're making sure they're taking care of what the Ector County Utility District is needing done, that the city's portion of the project is also being handled together. It simplifies the project, helps us make sure everything gets covered that way. And in this agreement, basically, we will make the payments when the invoices come in out of city funds, and then we will immediately invoice Ector County Utility District for their portions of those invoices, and they will reimburse us.
Any questions? Are there any questions?
Are you happy?
Yes, ma'am. I've been on this for two years.
I know a lot of people out in county will be very happy, so...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. You're dismissed. Next few items. We do have Saundra Oof in the audience, so I'd like to welcome you, our partner on the Convention Center and Hotel. So the next few... Next is consider a hotel conference center design build agreement. Mr. Long.
I'm with it. We've tabled that.
I'll stick with that.
And motion table and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is tabled. Number 14, consider a hotel center city development agreement. Mr. Long.
As the council is aware, we have entered into a master development agreement with E official, Gay House, and UEB, who is our design builder. This particular agreement would very further delineate and specify the details that were left out of that master development agreement, and that's really the entire purpose it has. We anticipate that E official will also enter into a similar agreement for the hotel. If anyone, if this is found to be favorable to the council and you move for approval, I would request that you make motion to approve the contract in substantially the same form as it has been submitted, allowing us to make any altered changes that we have to make.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Long with you. Mr. Long? Long? And motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number 15, consider the resolution to approve the Strategic Alliance Memorandum between the city of Odessa and the United States Small Business Administration. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. The United States Small Business Administration is seeking to enter into a strategic alliance memorandum with the city of Odessa to develop a working relationship with regard to providing joint goals of strengthening and expanding small business development in the Odessa area.
Are there any questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, underneath Ms. Laney's, the appointment of boards. Ms. Romano.